This time I'll call our regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission to order and call upon Commissioner Yulborn to lead us in an invocation.
Phil, please join me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you today to give you honor and praise. We recognize that you are the source of all that is good and that you are the source of all our blessings. Thank you for all the gifts of this life that you have bestowed upon us. We thank you for the freedom and opportunity to gather together this day. We ask for your blessing upon this meeting. We ask that you would guide and direct our meeting so that it is full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. Thank you for helping to guide our work on behalf of our neighbors and our community. In your name we pray.
Please join me in the Fledge of Allegiance.
The Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody to our meeting tonight. Glad to have you all here. First item on the agenda is the approval of the regular minutes of the meeting of November 7th, 2018. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, we'll...
That's all moved.
Is there a motion approved?
Second.
Motion second, all those favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed like sign, motion carries. Right, now, item two is recognition of the City of Harlingen Vital Statistics Department recipient of the 2018 exemplary five-star service award. So if we could get folks to come up here, join me, the Health Director, Dr. Minaus, our Registrar, Anna Vargas. All right, well, what a privilege it is and what a great honor for our city to once again be the recipient of the 2018 exemplary five-star award for our city annual Texas Vital Statistics Conference. And I want to present that to you all and tell everybody a little bit about what this means. Out of 400 local registrars in Texas, only 33 cities have a Harlingen Vital Statistics Office. It's been this award every year since its commencement in Block 99. So, yeah, there was a story on there, there was a story on the D's just the other day. I won't go into the details, but it was talked about somebody adding someone who lost a loved one to them in trouble getting a certificate. And, you know, so we kind of take, these are things we take for granted, but they're so important to people in times of joy and in times of despair and also in times of just needing to have some documentation to help you do things in your life to advance your career or to go on a trip or get a passport or do things that, you know, we take for granted every single day. But this is not easy work and it's very detailed work, time-consuming work. It's work that has to be done with a great deal of professionalism or people are hurt because this job isn't done. And we can say, in City Harlingen, because of the hard work that your departments do and the efforts that you all lead, that we make a lot of people's lives a lot easier because of what you do. That's important, important work. So congratulations. Thank you.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. You want to say anything?
No, thank you.
Yeah. Rodrigo said we'll pass item D. Is it on the consent agenda?
I don't know.
No, it's item four.
What did he mean, four?
Okay, well, Rodrigo, did you mean item four or item two or item three D?
Item four is the, or item D is under review. Mindful areas, consideration of possible action for proposed sunshine, health care, subdivision, the engineer is requesting that.
So you want to pass, we want to pass item four D as well, three, three D, all right. So consent agenda items three A, B, and C, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda items three A, B, and C?
That's all moved.
Second.
All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed like sign, motion carries. Item D will be passed and also told that we're not prepared on item four, so we'll pass item four. So it brings us to item five, which is consideration, take action, adopt a resolution, directing staff to prepare a service plan and initiate proceedings for the voluntary annexation of a 36.46 acre tract of land, more or less consisting of all Block 99 Wilson tract subdivision, saving and accepting 3.54 acres of land, more or less located with the flat of Pelicans Landing Estates, Phase One, located north of Pink Flamingo Street, east of Tam Lane. Advocate David Salinas.
Thank you, Mayor. We're waiting for this slide to kick in. Mr. Salinas, the applicant on behalf of Arturo Ortega, the property owner, has requested a voluntary annexation of 36.46 acres tract of land. The subject property is outside but adjacent to the current city limits. The city limits are in red right here. The developer will be responsible, I'm sorry, the subject property is currently vacant. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the subject property into 160 single-family residential subdivisions to be done in four phases. The proposed subdivision will have a frontage across from Brown Pelican Lane and access from Seahawk Lane, which of these two? The name didn't come up, but this is Seahawk Lane and it's Brown Pelican. The developer will be responsible for all infrastructure provisions, including street development, street lights, water and wastewater services, storm sewer, and other requirements as specified on the subdivision regulations. Water and wastewater disposal for this subdivision is proposed to be provided through the Harlingen Water Works. The developer has requested residential, single-family district for the subject property and subject to annexation will require three public hearings and two readings of ordinances to annex the property. The above timeline delineates the annexation process. Just keep an eye on view, that's a 36, that is an area view, current city limits.
Is that, is that blue area in the primary or city limits?
The blue area, yes, sir. So we have, everything in red is the city limits, this is Wilson Road, this is Dr. Rodriguez's elementary, and so this would be the property here and they're going to do it in four sections.
Is that primary or is that county?
It is, I'm sorry, it is county, I apologize.
This county.
It is county and then up here would be the primary city limits, that is correct.
You talked to the developer about the egress?
Yes, sir. I spoke with the developer today. He is aware and he is prepared to make any changes. The subdivision preliminary plan is under review right now by the engineering department. They are waiting for traffic studies. I believe they have concluded the drainage study and they're okay with that. And so the developer says, you know, pending that, then I'll be ready to make whatever changes I need to make to satisfy our requirements.
I know that area from there back to the west in that blue area has experienced some drainage and flooding issues.
Correct. And they are addressing it through the drainage study and engineering is satisfied with the study that they have provided.
Well, we just need to make sure that when they subdivide that, we don't cause a problem for the people that are already subdivided right to the south of it.
Correct.
Because they may not have a problem now and then when they pave all those streets and put the houses in there, all of a sudden we've created a new problem for them.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you have anything further?
Yes, sir.
Assuming I have any questions, Rodrigo, need to ask the city attorney to read the caption.
For a resolution?
I'm sorry, it's not a, I was looking at item four, which we skipped, so it's just a resolution. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
That's all moved.
Second.
All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed like sign, motion carries. Item six, public hearing and take action to consider an ordinance on first reading to rezone from heavy industrial H District to light industry L District for 17.74 acres out of Lot 1, Block 1, Texas Pipe Bending Subdivision located at 5129 East Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant had recently submitted the same request. However, the rezoning request failed due to lack of a second motion. There is an existing 5,669 square foot building on the subject property. The property has approximately 345 feet of frontage down here on East Harrison and a depth of approximately 1,171 feet. It is a little, couple of jacks here, so we're just measuring all the way through. The surrounding properties are sewn heavy industry district to the east and light industry to the west. North and south of the subject property are located outside the city limits. The future land use component of the comprehensive plan shows this area as industrial use. The comprehensive plan defines industrial use as larger properties typically used for manufacturing products, storage, distribution of goods, mining, or construction activities. To present, the planning and zoning department has not received any objection from the surrounding property owners for the proposed request. The P&amp;Z did recommend approval, however, staff recommends disapproval since the request is not consistent with the comprehensive plan for industrial use of the property.
Is my memory correct, we, this came up?
Yes, sir.
Four, six, eight, 10 weeks ago?
Yes, sir.
And this is a church that wants to buy this?
They believe that.
Is there a ten?
Yes, sir.
The churches bought this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so since it's church property, then there's no taxes due on it?
Not at this time, no, sir. We haven't, I mean, if they purchased it, they'd purchase it with a clean, a clean unit.
It's taxable, right? Depends on the use, if it's going to be for a church, it's probably going to be taxable. But the land right now is taxable.
Yes, currently, yes.
And what sort of light industry do they want to put on this?
For a church.
They had, they did advise us that the purpose for the rezoning is to put a church.
Does a church qualify as light industry?
It would be allowed, however, there is nothing to show right now that the request would be consistent with the actual uses that is being around the area. That's what we're recommending disapproval.
The P&amp;Z sort of hung their hat on the fact that the paintball place was there. We didn't change the zoning for the paintball RC facility, did we? But it's over in the light industry area, right?
Correct, sir.
That's own light industry.
It used to be, it has since closed. It is a warehouse here that they produce, it's like a distribution for industrial oils and a warehouse is being currently under construction here that is going to house flatbed storage.
Right, it's gone back to light industry use.
Correct, correct.
There's an oil distribution company, I believe, that's purchasing.
That is correct, sir.
And the RC people are gone.
Yeah, they're gone. So it's getting sort of revitalized into this new company.
Right. And the existing, the 16 companies here, even though they're in the county, they are consistent with the industry use in the area.
Well, the fact that I don't see anything's changed since the last time it came up, I really would like to motion for a denial of the ordinance or any further. No, I got to, I got to go to public hearing first.
The other thing, it looks to me, like I looked it up on the appraisal district, and it looks to me like it's 17.74 acres out of 38.789 acres, Lot 1, Block 1. So it seems to me that the next thing that's going to happen if we were to grant this is that there'll be, what's the length to width ratio?
It's four to one and this, this particular tract does not meet it, so they would have to subdivide and request a variance, yes or no.
So they'll be back for a variance on that. You know, the property is, was used for tech steel. It has a railroad track in the back on the north side of that picture, a canal on the west side, and then that other property on the east side where the two big long buildings are. So the only frontage it has or access it has is that 300 and whatever it is.
345, 345 foot, yes.
345 feet on the front, so.
I don't believe that's a canal. I think that's a non-designated strip of land. I thought it was a canal and I went back out there and looked and I looked at the canals further.
Right here, sir. This would be the canal.
The canal.
Yes, sir.
That's an irrigation.
Okay. All right, let me go to item A, which is a public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for or against this rezoning? Okay, if you step up to the podium and identify, please give us your name.
Yes, sir.
And tell us your address, where you live and then...
Where I live? Okay, my name is Pastor David Villarreal and I live in 127 Resaca Shores in San Benito. Moved down here, what, about five, seven, eight years ago. I grew up and was raised here in Harlingen. I come from the Texas Department of Corrections where I was a chaplain there and was, I'd just been released from the Marine Corps and my desire was to do something great for our community. Through a couple of years of prayer and fasting, we've been looking at properties and we came across this one that had been sitting idle for about 10 years, about three foot of grass through the whole property, all kinds of debris, steel, hundreds of railroad ties all over the place, just a big mess. And we were aware about the zoning restriction on it. But, you know, being a spiritual organization, as we did earlier today, we did pray and we knew that this was going to be an obstacle. We knew that this was going to be a challenge for us. And we tried to look somewhere else. This was not our first choice. We wanted something else, but the Lord kept bringing us here. We conducted a prayer meeting out there to see if this is what the Lord wanted for us, even though it was not zoned for that. We began to look at the surrounding area and we saw that the soccer complex where we spent a lot of time was just down the road. We saw that there used to be a paintball area to the left of us, as was mentioned. And so walking by faith, not by sight, we decided, you know, let's go ahead and do this because we believe that the Lord answered our prayer after a couple of years of prayer and fasting. And we went into this property and we found out that up to 40 youth had been partying out there, having liquor parties out there. There's animals all over the place, the warehouse to the, to the right of us, if you stand in front of it, doors are down, weather's all in there. There's a couple of owls living in there and it's just a big mess. And I was hoping that the city would give us an opportunity to get in there. Now, the line that we're asking to be moved is just from, if you're facing the property, from the left to the right of us. It's on the left side, if it would just move to the right of us, if you're facing the property. We believe that we can do something great with this piece of land. It's been sitting idle, the property to our right, also that warehouse that I'm talking about, it's also been sitting idle there for about 10 years. We spoke to the manager that used to work there, gave us a tour of the place, and he said, yes, it's been sitting here for about 10 years. We even saw one of his brochures on the ground where he used to work there. And so all kinds of things, there's actually bird hunting going on there. There are spent shells all over the place toward the back where the railroad tracks are at and inside the property. And it's been sitting there for about 10 years, as I said. And so we're all, all we're asking is if the line could be moved to the right of us so we can get in there and do something productive with that piece of land. Again, often at this, we can hear the children playing at the soccer complex and so we believe that this property could accommodate us without, you know, posing any kind of danger. There's only really two eyesores out there. Everything's been looking beautiful as people are taking over and starting up a business. There's a boat storage out there just opened up, it's looking beautiful. Only two eyesores, eyesores, our property and the one to the right. We've already begun to clean ours. And if you'll give us the opportunity, I believe this is the will of God for us, and if you give us the opportunity, we'll go out there and do something great with that piece of land.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for or against this rezoning?
Commissioners, Mayor, my name is Raul Delgarza. I'm the CEO for Harlingen Economic Development Corporation. I did want to point out that the fuel distributor that is to the left of this site, to the west, is planning on expanding its facilities. It's planning on bringing a rail spur into that property. We're working with them to try to get that rail spur done. They're looking at anywhere from two to five rail cars a day, which is anywhere from 30 to 60,000 gallons a day coming through, sometimes more, and that's every day. So their business is expanding, they're creating jobs, and they're in a light industrial zone, which they are in the proper place for that. Yes, the warehouse to the east of that property is dilapidated. We have been trying hard to market a property that is not marketable. Ownership isn't willing to step up and do things to make it marketable. And so we continue to make those efforts. However, we feel that if there is a change of zone or a change of use within that zone, that could be detrimental to the continued development of the industrial park and creation of jobs and exactly what we were set out to do in this area, which is create light and heavy industry.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for or against this rezoning?
Okay, just very, very briefly, if you want to respond.
The soccer complex is not that far away. I believe if it's safe enough for them, it should be safe enough for us. It's not that far away.
Yeah, all right. Anyone else, any other public comment? Hearing now, I'll close the public comment and go to item B, which is the consideration possible action to prove an ordinance on first reading to rezone the above described property from heavy industry H District to light industry L District.
I do have a question for Rodrigo.
Can we go ahead and read the, have her read the caption?
Public hearing and take action to consider a request to rezone from heavy industry district to light industry district for 17.74 acres out of Lot 1, Block 1, Texas Pipe Bending Subdivision located at 5129 East Harrison.
Okay, okay. You're still working on the caption or?
I think that's it.
Yeah, I apologize. I read what was flagged here. I don't see a...
It's on that, it's on the P&amp;Z.
Yeah.
The caption is not in here. I wouldn't think it's changed.
Does anybody have a...
We're going to use the same caption, the one from the P&amp;Z.
Yeah.
Do you have a page?
I believe the last page is in aerial photo. Last page is... No, this is all I have. I want the same thing. I don't have it.
Well, it's the same caption that's in here, right?
Do you have, do you have a...
Well, it's in the caption from the P&amp;Z that was in there, what she, what she just read.
I didn't get the P&amp;Z online.
Interesting. Okay. Well, if there's a, if anybody has a copy of the ordinance, I could...
Yeah, I would just, the ordinance is in the packet.
Okay.
Can't we just read the, the, that part of the item six, ordinance on first, ordinance to rezone from heavy, and she gives the legal description there, Lot 1, Block...
Yeah, I mean, this, this describes adequately what, what the intent of the ordinance is, so I think it's, it's sufficient.
Okay.
So on the, on the executive summary, public hearing and action to consider an ordinance on first reading to rezone from heavy industry district to light industry district for 17.74 acres out of Lot 1, Block 1, Texas Pipe Bending Subdivision located at 5129 East Harrison.
Okay, now, Commissioner, you've got a question.
Yeah. There's only one building on the property?
There's two, so there's one partial here and then one that way back.
The partial, and there's, where is the, on the aerial photo, I do not see a driveway leading either.
They have a, they have a shared driveway from, from this property right in here. Let me see if I have one. That's it.
So they're going to use the shared driveway?
Well, until they subdivide and they come up with another design. Right now it's just for the rezoning.
Just for rezoning?
Yes.
They don't have an easement or anything there, they're just using it because the former owner had that, that was how he accessed it.
And still owns the entire property until it's taken out. I believe that sale was done through meets and bounds.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions for Rodrigo? Is there, is there a motion to approve or to deny or...
I'm motion to disapprove.
Okay, there's a motion to disapprove the order.
Yep. If we do nothing?
Yeah, I think you could do nothing too. What would you...
If you do nothing, if there's, say, a motion and then there's no second, the, the motion will die. So that would have the same effect as, as turning it down. Or if there's a motion and a second and then there's no majority, then, or supermajority, then it would have the same effect.
Okay, well...
I would like to comment to the pastor and the church that, you know, this isn't something that we take lightly or any pleasure in doing. It's just a question of, it wasn't done properly to begin with. Typically, someone would come in before they buy a piece of property and see if they could change the zoning to what they want to use it for, and then they decide whether they want to complete the purchase. In this case, the church has completed the purchase and is asking us to do something that we don't believe is in the city's best interest to do. It's nothing about you, it's about everybody. And so I just want you to know that we're not taking it out on you, but that's just, if this had been done in the normal sequence, we wouldn't be here, probably.
All right, okay. Or if you, if you were to begin activity out there and one of these other, you know, one of these other uses, the main use, which is heavy industry, comes, it, it might actually interfere with what you want to do out there and then you would have, we, we want to try to avoid that potential conflict between what you're trying to do and what others that, because it's zoned, heavy industry, would also be able to do.
Or if there's a motion and a second, and then there's no majority, then, or supermajority, then it would have the same effect.
Okay, well.
I would like to comment to the pastor and the church that, you know, this isn't something that we take lightly or any pleasure in doing. It's just a question of, it wasn't done properly to begin with. Typically, someone would come in before they buy a piece of property and see if they could change the zoning to what they want to use it for, and then they decide whether they want to complete the purchase. In this case, the church has completed the purchase and is asking us to do something that we don't believe is in the city's best interest to do. It's nothing about you, it's about everybody. And so I just want you to know that we're not taking it out on you, but that's just, if this had been done in the normal sequence, we wouldn't be here, probably.
All right. Or if you, if you were to begin activity out there, and one of these other, one of these other uses, the main use, which is heavy industry, comes, it, it, it might actually interfere with what you want to do out there, and then you would have, we, we want to try to avoid that potential conflict between what you're trying to do and what others that, because it's zoned, heavy industry, would also be able to do. And to that extent, I mean, we, we wouldn't want you to invest more money into the property and then you not be able to use it the way you want to do it if somebody's doing something like Rodell described on the property. So it is a difficult thing for us to make a decision like this, but anyway, there's a motion to deny or to, not to approve the ordinance, so we can either take action or not take action. There's no second, I hear no second. So hearing no second, that motion dies. Is there any other motion? Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance? I hear no motion to adopt the ordinance, so, so this, the item fails, and there is no approval of the ordinance, changing the, the rezoning, or there's nothing that rezones this property. All right. Item seven, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow a contractor shop plumbing in a general retail GR district located at twenty-five oh five FM five oh eight, bearing a legal description of Lot two, Block one, Alexandria Estates subdivision, applicant Roberto Cabrera.
Thank you, Mayor. The subject property is located on the north side of FM five oh eight. The property has ninety-seven feet of frontage and a depth of three hundred and eighty-seven feet. The adjacent zoning is general retail to the east and west, non-designated to the south, and outside the city limits to the north. Section one-one, one dash sixty-two of the zoning ordinance requires a specific use permit for a contractor shop plumbing. The applicant states that the primary use for the, is for office and business vehicles. The subject property is currently vacant. The surrounding land use includes a mechanic shop, a body shop, agriculture and open space, and a single-family residence. The applicant is proposing, the applicant is proposing a two thousand four hundred square foot building for offices with about three to four staff members and plumbing materials. The proposed hours of operation are Monday through Saturday from eight AM to five PM, and the applicant has stated that no work will be done at the subject property. The service calls are in different locations throughout the valley. Zoning ordinance requires one parking space for each four hundred square foot of floor area, therefore, six parking spaces are required. The applicant is proposing approximately ten spaces. City departments like engineering, environmental health, fire prevention, and building inspections will review and verify compliance to the issuance of a building permit. PNC staff recommend approval through, of the request subject to the following, that compliance with the requirements administered by planning and zoning, engineering, environmental health, fire prevention, and building inspection departments. If you can answer any questions.
All right. Let me go to item, anybody have any questions?
How long has it been zoned, general retail?
I believe, sir, it was, it was zoned when the property was annexed in, was it two thousand eight or two thousand nine? And there are some shops already in the area.
All right, let me go to item A, which is public hearing. I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for or against a specific use permit? Is there anyone who'd like to speak for or against a specific use permit? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll go to item B, which is the consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow a contractor shop plumbing in a general retail GR district that the above described property, and I ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance permitting the code of ordinances of the city of Harlingen to issue a specific use permit to Roberto Cabrera to allow a contractor shop plumbing in a general retail district located at twenty-five oh five FM five oh eight, bearing a legal description of Lot two, Block one, Alexandria Estates subdivision, subject to complying with requirements administered by the planning, building inspections, environmental health, and fire prevention departments, providing for publications and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is the, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item eight, executive close session on the following items, A pursuit to section five fifty-one point oh seven-one, Texas Government Code to consult with city attorney in connection with the MPO merger, and B, pursuit to Texas Government Code, section five fifty-two point oh seven-one, Subparagraph two, on a matter in which the duty of the attorney of the governmental body and the Texas Department of Rules and Approach for conduct, state bar taxes, clear conflicts with this chapter regarding the recovery of the Lincoln Hotel occupancy tax payments. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved, sir.
All those who ever say aye, like sign, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, the city commission is now gonna meet in executive session with its attorney, and there, there could be action on item nine when we return. Thank you. Okay, we're out of executive session at six forty-seven, and we'll go to item nine, which is consideration possible action to approve, item five, be discussed in executive session.
Motion for an approval?
Second.
Any discussion? All those who ever say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item ten, citizen's communication, there is none, so ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, and good night.